Welcome, everybody, to Town panel special select board meeting December sixteenth at 6:00 P. M. We need to call to order approval of agenda F Y two thousand twenty-three budget, public comment, executive session personnel adjourn. Can I entertain a motion to accept?
I'll move you to accept the agenda, approve the agenda.
Can I have a second? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. F Y two thousand twenty-three budget?
Oh, this one's red. Yeah.
Oh, boy.
I love red pencils. Pens.
One of the questions last time was under the auditor section as far as what we've been doing in the past. Yep. When I went back and did some of the research, it looked like it had been a budget line for several years at just forty-one hundred. And I couldn't get any detail as far as what it was based on, like ten hours for three people or whatever. When I looked at the actual expenditures, it was extremely low. It was like four hundred fifty-six dollars nineteen for crystal. And I think Rebecca had a four hundred fifty dollars as well.
Mm hmm.
But it seemed so low, it didn't seem real.
Did Tom not put in for anything?
He, I didn't, didn't come up. So anyway, so I said, okay, stick with forty-one hundred and just raise it for what you think inflation would be. So I just came up with six thousand and five hundred dollars. Um, we can base it on. There's three auditors, right, when they're elected?
Yes.
That was about two and a half hours a week at fifteen dollars an hour per person.
Which I think that's what they were doing, actually, is about that.
So then it's.
I think you're fairly accurate with that. No, I'm not positive, but.
And then their expense line was five hundred dollars, and it'd been that way for years, too.
Okay.
Same. And then that brings us back to where we left off, which is right at the top of office building and ground. It's one hundred thirty-seven. And we left off at wages for janitor. So what I've done here, some of these, this is where we get into a lot of the stuff that I just relating to the new town hall, because we don't know what we're going to be spending yet or how. Um, so the three thousand is essentially what we spent. It's about two hundred fifty dollars a month for Roger for this location. I believe we're probably going to need a service or something larger depending upon what we end up doing. If we keep this and have to do this occasionally, it won't be weekly. There's also been talk, Joel's and Ellen and I have discussed sort of, there might be a need for sort of a facilities person that does a lot of different things when it comes to like lawn care for the building or um, that's not in here, just so you know, but that's started to be talked about, like there may need to be a, a building person. And perhaps they'd be part of the road budget that could then do all of the buildings if, you know, probably not the wastewater, because they do a lot of that themselves. And it's a whole other thing.
They take care of their pump stations and stuff, a blean.
So where I started with that was I took what we do now and doubled it essentially, thinking if we stay at the minimalist, if we go with a service or if we stay with Roger, it's probably going to come into that range somehow. Um, if you, if we start looking at a facilities person or a maintenance man.
Well, that's a whole nother position.
Right. And that's, so that's not in here. I just want to bring it up to you that there's been several options discussed as far as what may be necessary. I think right now it's get in there, figure out what we need at that point and don't try to.
Yeah. And see if.
Right.
Roger will let us know if that's too much for him and we need to take and seek elsewhere.
Right, or if we need a different, yes.
Well, I think, I think.
Bet it out then.
You're, you're above and beyond one or one single person cleaning that building over there.
Right.
I mean, that's my personal opinion. I mean, it's just, you know. And taking care of it, you know, you, you know, there's just, there's.
Actually, we go from one bathroom to three bathrooms.
Exactly. You go from, right, and, and it's not, you know, there's, there's some logistics there that are involved, too. It's, you know, you, your downstairs bathroom, there's no, you have to go all the way down and round. So you're going to clean the downstairs at one point, upstairs at another point, I, I would think. You might not do it all on Sunday.
Right. All right. Office supplies. So let's see, last, so I, I bumped that by three thousand to seventy-five hundred because in addition to whatever we need here, which I figured this be lateral over there, but then anything new that we may need regarding small furniture items, small chair items, not big items, but more sort of that things that just we haven't thought through yet as far as.
Pop-up things.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Things are going to pop up as we go into.
And don't necessarily need to be a huge thing and for, but.
Computers have just been upgraded and should be good there, right?
Yeah, that budget's the same, that budget stayed the same.
Um, yeah, I mean, yeah, we don't know until we start moving in.
There's some things like that. I haven't spoken to the plumber over there yet, but we have to have like a water cooler. And I think that's a code issue that Eric was talking to me about. It's like a real um, water fountain. There's a spot for two of them. And so I was like, well.
And do a water fountain instead of the bubbler?
That's the part I don't know. That's the thing we have to find out what's required in, in the plan. I can't determine whether it's some, like a hard-wired water fountain. That's a code thing. There. There's a spot for two, it almost looks like, you know, a high one and a low one. But those are the types of things.
I just know that in a municipal setting that that uh, water cooler's got to be hooked to a G F I is the only requirement.
Oh, okay.
G F C.
G.
F C, rather, if I want to be technical.
So janitorial supplies I took out. We rarely use it and just put whatever we need here into office um, supplies. Building maintenance, I bumped up to five because I thought, and it's not for the new building, it's actually for this building. Is there something we're going to have to do once we start pulling stuff out of here to prep it or not prep it or prepare it to whatever.
Honestly, don't know yet, because I don't have really.
We haven't discussed it.
So hence the contingency is.
Yes. Right. Right. And I don't think it would be a lot, but you know, you never know.
Right.
What this might end up being. All right. Office equipment, I left that pretty much the same, just rounded it up to ten thousand. The subscribe services and the I T, so those are left them where they were from last year. I've sat down with Chuck and we've gone through and pretty much kept everything the same. Okay. And we will, do want to start migrating more to subscribe services, which basically means like Office three sixty-five on the cloud. We've started to use that um, between Megan and I, and we have one other license. And I'd like to get two more licenses, but they're minimal. It's three hundred dollars a year, I believe, per license. Because what it's done is we now have a central place for all of our files, all that stuff. And the two extra licenses, I would like, it'd be great if um, Joel and Darcy could have them, because then wherever they are, they can just plug in without a lot of extra infrastructure on their end. And they can start.
And just log in on your grand outlook and.
Yeah, exactly. It's all the same and then they can have a place to, to repository. And I was really disappointed. I had hoped we had gone down this whole path with ARPA funds, that they were available for increased cybersecurity, which is true, except if there's a little fine print thing. But we had gotten a whole thing that we really could have applied the ARPA funds to all the new server stuff we're doing for that building, because it's all enhanced. But the only way that applies is if you have um, a revenue loss, which we do not.
No.
So I was disappointed in that, would have been a savings of about ten grand.
The burden on the taxpayers is revenue loss.
You should see the formula you have to fill, they finally put out some guidance and it took a long time, but we were close.
The bond is a revenue loss.
I cried. The bank service charge, that's, we just raised to what we're spending. It's a few extra dollars a month for the direct deposit and the additional things we're doing so that people get their direct deposits and the online pieces. Peg access TV, that's pretty much the same. The, the contract we have now ends in July, yes, July. And so I put a little in there just for an extra. They haven't come out with any new prices. It's all based on, on our new rates. Yes, so that includes, um, I did a couple of things with the insurance. I increased the deductible to five thousand. Um, it had been previously at one thousand, so that saved us money. So that when we added the million-dollar building, it pretty much evened out, which is great. Let's see, the legal fund, so this, this um, goes back to the same idea I followed with the accounting, where it was always at one line and we would use it, whatever was left was put into um, the fund. This I broke in between um, the legal fees we've been spending a year, which hopefully would go down a little bit, but that's what that seventeen thousand is. That's roughly what we've been spending on, on Fisher and Fisher. But with and the ten thousand to go into the legal fund, because it's pretty low. It's at fifteen hundred, I believe. You'll see on the, the page, second, the last page after the budget, there's the um, fund sheet. That shows what we have now in there.
Legal fund, is that it right there?
Yeah, so it's fifteen hundred dollars right now.
It balances, it says two fifty, or am I looking at the wrong one?
Fifteen sixty thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
As of July, June of this year.
June thirtieth.
I'm looking at the, two thousand twenty, sorry.
So it's wise to. Do you see that again? Especially the.
Upcoming possibilities.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay, and then the legal posting, so when I, so there's, right now I have, I have the sense that when we do like bids and all of the warnings and all of that that go into the papers, they're going to that line. So I broke it out so we could actually start capturing what that costs us a year. And the way I came up with seventy-five hundred is I went through our A P and picked the Bennington banner, the Vermont News Guide, and then the Vermont shopper that we used for a while, and totaled what we spent in a year. And it was that. And I'm, it should be apples to apples with the upcoming year, because we have the elections and we have all the warnings, so everything felt copacetic that way.
So between, I mean, the legal fund professional services went from twenty thousand to ten thousand, but we added the seventy-five hundred and the seventeen thousand for legal postings and legal fees.
Yeah. Yes. Yep, yep, yep. Yes.
So that's an increase of fourteen thousand five hundred across all three, if all three of those things were previously covered under the one-line item.
Right. The, 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 the fund and the legal fees were, for sure. Crown maintenance, I left that as it is. Now, we're saving money using our current um, lawn mowing service, which is great. So I left it as is for a couple of reasons. One, we had talked about earlier for the maintenance for the trees in town. That could come out of that line for some of the, and for the cemetery work, for the additional tree works there, if we want to go there. Um, and it would be an option if we needed additional, like a maintenance person, and we didn't go to the road. So I didn't change it.
And aren't we under contract with our current lawn care for two more years?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I thought so.
I don't remember if it was two or one, but yeah.
I know, well, he's only done it for one, so.
There's two more seasons.
There's two more seasons on there, okay.
Was that a lock-in rate, though? No.
I think, I think he has a.
A fuel surge.
A fuel surge, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't think there was an increase in mowing, right?
Yeah, it was pretty steady.
I was just trying to remember.
Comes out of here is the, is the shoveling for the walks here, which is around two thousand dollars. Okay, here for the office alarm system, again, I just um, doubled it, thinking we're going to have to have this one and over there until we figure out what's going on. Office electricity, that building should be a lot more energy efficient, I'm hoping, but it's larger. So when I tried to figure out, kind of not double, it kind of didn't play out.
Yeah.
Same for fuel for the office. Now, the tank, so that the thousand gallon tank that we're just getting for that is costing that, and we got a, a good rate. It was two dollars and twenty cents, and it was around twenty-two hundred to fill it. No, two thousand.
Yep.
Eight hundred times two twenty, that's that.
That's eighty percent.
Yeah. So. Seventeen sixty.
Yep.
So that feels on top of what this runs usually, right? All right. Telephone, the office, this I didn't completely, so the way I kind of did this was, my thought is all these numbers are going to move to there, but we'll have to probably keep at least one here.
Yeah, have to have one line.
And they're about fifty to a hundred dollars depending upon a month. So I just added twelve hundred dollars to the telephone to get to six. Cell phones. So um, right now, and this is a question for you all. Right now, it's very hard for us to determine easily how much we're spending on cell phones. There's not a lot of usage, so when this contract is up, it'll definitely make sense to really review it. And that contract will be up next October, September, October, to really understand who needs them and, and do we have extra coverage where we don't need it?
Yeah.
So my thought here was, right now, everything, everyone's being charged to their individual expense line. Here, I just took the total, which for Verizon is about five hundred dollars a month. And then we have A T and T, which is about two hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, and I combined them.
That's for how many phones total, plus the hotspot?
What's the hotspot? So that's for three phones, and then I could do a quick count.
I call it a hotspot, but it's a, I know he, uh, Tom's got the thing so we can run the.
Yes.
I may not be calling it the right name.
No, no, I know, it is, you're right. He uses that for his laptop on the.
In the shed down there.
Yep. Yes.
That's the only service really that reaches down that little hole.
Yeah. But it's for the Verizon, we, it must be nine or ten. I could look really. Everyone's got.
So just. People.
And the field that makes sense, Joel and Darcy and all them, it's in here that a lot of people just, I don't, I rarely use mine.
Well, initially, we did that because of people working at home with their laptops and COVID and all that. Now that things are evolved in that situation, then yeah, it's a good thing to look at again.
Well, I don't remember adding very many cell phones to our.
I thought when I added three, but.
Maybe.
I can't remember.
Maybe, but. Maybe.
Did add some.
We did, yeah.
With the, with the grant, with the elder grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's. That's right, I remember the grant. Thank you.
Well, like, like you said, we'll have to look at use and see what we can cut, because if we're not using them, we need to get them off of here. They're, they're pretty expensive.
All right, so parks and recreation, I added. And the number's arbitrary, so if you don't agree, change it, take it out. But here's the reasoning. One, um, they've been doing a heck of a lot. And they don't have any help from the town when it comes to stuff like that.
Right.
My thinking was um, a little bit where they need it, and then stuff for like the town picnic. Yourself and Jen and the couple citizens donated stuff out of their own. Something you want to carry forward, you could come out of this line.
Mike?
Oh, I'm, I'm all for a budget for.
I thought you were going to say something.
No, I'm, I'm all for that budget, and, and I think that I don't have a problem with five thousand dollars. I think the park and rec committee has, for all intents and purposes, has done a tremendous job in a pretty short period of time, and I think they have some goals. And I think the days of um, volunteers and people doing stuff are gone. So I, I think if we're going to continue having them do what they're doing, we need to give them a little bit of money. Just my opinion.
I, I'd like to see a real focus on volunteerism, because that's really what brings the community together. And I'm not against the, the budget line. I'm not against the budget line at all, but did they ask for five thousand?
No, that was me. I just picked a number and the way I came up with it was the, what was budgeted for the picnic was around a grand. And then I know they looked into a couple of grants that had small matching, so that's where I, and then extra. So again, like I said.
Also, the bathroom.
Right.
Yeah, the porta potty.
Yeah.
The bathroom increases use enormously, especially in the warm months when people go down to that park.
Yeah, and that's a good point, because right now that's the.
Yeah, and then what is it, like two fifty a month?
Hundred, hundred twenty-five if we currently use.
Okay.
Yeah. And.
Yes.
So um, yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm okay with the five thousand. I was just hoping that we could cut that, you know, start them with a smaller budget and maybe grow into a larger budget. But I also don't want to disincentize volunteerism, because we really got to get town folk to, to up and volunteer for these things.
But.
Unfortunately, the same five people show up every single time. And I would be one of them.
Well, yes, that's true. Um, that's true, but we, that's also during, during COVID. So as we come out of that, it might change. We, we didn't have very many people show up at the town picnic either. So I, I'm thinking that maybe the.
I'm not talking just the town.
When you can't get people to show up for free food, how you gonna get them to show up for work?
Yeah.
No, seriously, think about it. If you can't get them to show for free food, you can't get them to show.
Well, that's true, but there were reasons.
How many years ago did our kids play baseball? I can remember being at the park, running the concession stand. My kids weren't even playing. Many, many nights, so.
Yeah.
It's very hard to get people to show up.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, you know. I ran the baseball program, coached three teams.
I know, I know you did.
I was running seven nights a week. That was my life, because of, with the kids here, so whatever, it's, those, those days are gone.
Yeah, those days are way gone.
And just as someone who works with parks and rec, could I make a quick statement?
Absolutely, Rebecca.
Right, um, it just, the, the, I think the budget line is not to pay people to be on parks and rec. So it's still completely volunteer run.
Right.
But not having matching dollars for grants does disqualify us for quite a number of opportunities that help us continue. We brought a lot of use down to that park, you know, and it would be nice to have some, something, and, and even if it doesn't, maybe it doesn't even get spent most of the time, you know what I'm saying? But, but to have that matching fund sitting there would be helpful.
Yep.
Yeah, that was a, uh, that's, that's probably the biggest reason to have it, is the matching funds.
Well, that supports the group of volunteers that are working on ideas. So.
All right, so for the office sewer use line, I got, I'm back and forth with Darcy, and she is setting up the new town hall with one.
You're right.
That may, we, because we had to answer questions about its use and stuff that we weren't really sure just because of COVID and things like that. So we're starting at one E U, it may have to be later, if that's changed. But this reflects what we currently pay for this building, the waste wa, or, well, the one other lamp. Yes.
Yep.
And then the new town hall. Nemrick, that one we cut in half. That ten thousand pretty much covers all of the um, maintenance things and really costs that we have to incur with just by using the system. So it went down, it's great.
Does that include the assessor?
No.
Okay. And I mean, I, I, I am referring to the assessor that we use today, right? We use listers, but we also use the assessor.
Correct, yeah, no, that's a separate line item in the lister.
Okay.
Sick pay in general, I left that there. All right, so fire charges, um, here again, this is for the phone line for the fire service. So there's going to be one here, and there'll have to be a new phone line for.
You're talking to the alarm, correct?
Yep, that one. Um, the fire rescue dispatch, that's the dispatch services for the fire rescues. That's the same. The Vermont Fire World Protect, that protection, no one knew what it was and didn't look like we'd use it last, so I just took the hundred dollars out.
Okay.
The rec department, I kept as is. I don't know who makes the decision as to if it will be used or not, but it's there, just like it has in the last.
So in our general fund balance sheet, there should be there should be a positive balance in, under, under that rec department.
My understanding is that's whatever is for the summer program?
Right.
Yeah, so we didn't use it last year.
Right.
So I just carried the same.
Right, so there should be a balance already in that account.
That would have been the undesignated funds.
Correct.
The designated fund.
Well, right, then that's what I was, that's what I was, you know, is that should have been carried over to our undesignated funds.
Yes. Nine-one-one, that's all the same. Contracted services. There was discussion of wanting to possibly increase that in the number of hours, but I left it as it is. We discussed it here, if you wanted to increase that. Running five to six thousand a month.
What's the contracted service you're talking about?
Law enforcement.
The service department.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So um,
I think it's at forty-five hours a week.
Is it at forty-five? I thought it was a thirty-five.
Yeah, I think it is thirty-five.
I think it's thirty-five.
Yeah. Thirty-four, thirty-five.
It'd be up at two hours, I think we upped it two hours, didn't we?
Yeah.
I think we did.
Yeah, so that would make it, what, was it thirty-seven?
Right.
I don't know, I.
You did a thing for a couple of months.
I, I guess we'd have to speculate. We'll get it finished, then, so it isn't a second. But part of it went up, remember, the rate went up.
Right.
This year also.
Right.
At the hourly rate went up. So it's been maintained the same was more.
Forty-five dollars per hour for thirty hours a week.
Okay, that's what it was.
Yes.
The rate went up and we kept the same hours.
Yeah.
And the couple hours you're talking about is when they were doing that other investigation, able and clear, so.
Yep.
Do that.
And there has been numerous times that they've had to go over and they've called and asked, so I appreciate that. They call and ask, absolutely, always.
So, cool, what is that math, then? Thirty hours a week at forty-five dollars an hour?
Yes.
That's seventy thousand two hundred for fifty-two weeks.
Right, I, I think we should up that budget, in my mind.
At least to match the contract, right? Because we know it's going to be at least that, and then occasionally go over. We might need seventy-five.
Yeah, and I think, I think there's a need for an increase in, in the services anyways, in my opinion.
And would.
Well, I want to be, I, I'm just, just to be realistic, just the, the contract. Well, I want to be, I I'm just, just to be realistic, just the the contract that we have, if we keep the same contract, is going to be seventy thousand, which is
Right.
sixty-five that we're budgeting. So uh
That's from July to July, right?
That's right. Our contracts, I mean, we it's inevitable that the rate is going to go up. So we're gonna end up with less hours of service.
Well, we need to argue on that because the rate went up something like twenty percent the last time it went up. So it can't, it shouldn't go up. They shouldn't go up again for a while and we need to argue it. You can't go up twenty percent every year.
Right, but I'm it's inevitable that
It it'll eventually go up.
That it's gonna go up.
But this year it better not because it went up.
I don't see it staying level funded.
The only thing I'm gonna say on that is everybody is going up with wages because they can't get people.
Exactly. And so just to clarify, so the twenty nineteen from forty to one hundred forty-five, it stayed the same this year.
So they didn't take an increase this year.
They're they didn't go, they're they stayed at forty-five dollars an hour.
Yes.
So it's inevitable that
Yeah, they're gonna take
Yeah, it it is inevitable that they will be at some point. But but still twenty percent in one year and it doesn't go up every year. When you go back and look at the one that went up before the forty-five, I mean, I think we're all in agreement that it's gonna go up. But uh I'm not, I'm not saying it's gonna go, I'm not saying it's not gonna go up. What I'm saying is it shouldn't go up again until next year because of the twenty percent increase that it went up last time it went up. It was a twenty percent increase.
Right.
That's that's substantial.
It's it's more of a ten percent increase when it went from forty dollars to forty-five.
That's ten percent? Oh, yeah, I guess you're right. It's eleven, twelve percent.
Twelve percent, give or take, whatever. Yeah, it's not, it's not a twenty percent.
So I think we should go up to seventy-five. I think we should raise it ten thousand.
I I agree.
Everybody else agree?
I totally agree with that.
So it's the contract itself makes it seventy and then we're adding five thousand for
Just for, yeah.
All right, that brings us to animal control, wages we went through already and the expense. That's um what Leonard is anticipating for his expenses. Just from use, no nothing crazy, just mileage and
He's actually doing a good job. He's doing his job.
Yeah.
So my question here, the only question I have here, Tim, please. Um, under expenses, training and phone. Didn't didn't we pull the phone? And not that it's a huge amount of money because it's only
No, you're correct. I will, if we're gonna leave that, I will go back and subtract five hundred dollars from every client that has it in.
Okay, okay. That's the only, that's the only one I've noticed so far. I just was curious. Okay, and that's totally fine. Not that it's a huge amount of money because it's not when you're talking.
Yeah.
You know, the numbers we're talking about. Okay.
And then the boarding fees, that's oh, and a quick thing on the kennel. So um we still need to decide if we want to do a ballot article for that or put it through the budget. We got word back, I'm kind of delving out, but it pertains. We got word back from the CDC on the kennel and they'd been asking for, they're asking for a materials list, which we thought
they took care of, right?
Yeah. Um, so we decided both Leonard and I, when we sat down and talked about it, that it's not worth doing now because of the timing that it would take. Um, and he had already sort of figured out a plan B for this season. Um, he got a, someone donated a what do you call it? Doghouse to him that he's gonna rig to make it warmer. And then all he needs then to do is buy some fencing that goes around it in his garage. So
Okay.
And he thinks that'll survive, suffice for this season.
So I think, which brings us, I don't know if we want to get off task or not, but while we're talking animal control, let's talk about that kennel and get that off our board.
Okay, so
I think.
Okay.
Did we get a full quote back yet for what they wanted?
So where he's at is trying to figure out um the concrete pad and the location.
Need a location.
So he's figured out sort of where he'd like it to be and one of them is at the road department. So he's gonna speak to Joel and see if
I think I think we need to put that on whatever whatever it is. My opinion is to put it on as a ballot article and let the town decide whether or not they want that and not let us
I agree. Yeah, leave us to that.
But you know, let let the town decide whether or not they want to have that kennel. And if they say yes, then it becomes our responsibility to find the location and a suitable place with our animal control officer, but
Okay.
That's that's my opinion.
I agree with you because we're gonna go for, I think it's thirty thousand, correct?
What, be higher than that?
You think it's gonna be higher than that?
Whatever, whatever his, you know
Whatever it comes up to be.
Whatever it is, it is. It goes on a ballot article and then we don't have to make that decision.
Okay.
Didn't mean to get off task.
Nope, you're fine.
No, that's good for that.
Because we need to do that.
Well, we gotta talk about it anyway later on tonight, so we'll get it done now. While we're there.
Okay. All right.
So I would put that on Thursday's regular meeting.
What's that? We're gonna talk about ballot articles.
Yeah, if you choose, we can go into
Oh, okay.
some prepped that we can
All right, awesome.
This work and then you're right, Angie, we'd have to back around it.
Okay.
To prove it.
Yeah.
All right, uh, health officer. All the same, stays the same. This is one though, I'll go back and take out the phone, so. Five hundred dollars removed from
Which there again, um, I've been working with Fred on on a couple of different things um recently and um Fred's doing a good job. Fred's he's he's on the Learn While You Earn program, which of all of us, you know, when you come into a new whether it's, you know, me when I came in as zoning or Leonard as the health or the animal control officer or Fred as the health officer, but he's doing a really good job right now. So um I just wanted to make that statement.
All right, emergency coordinator is all the same. Delinquent tax collector, uh, the only thing we don't need to do the twenty-five thousand anymore because we handle letting the system handle that now. Um, the expense and training is for postage, so that goes into the common postage. All right, forest fire, that's the same. Streetlights, I just bumped it up a grand for the new streetlight that's gonna go on the town hall piece. All right, transportation. So this was all from I supplied. Rages, now we went over, that's all set. Um, FICA, that's all calculated buildings, that's I think he's planning on got some useful things to do on a little shed. Equipment and fuel, that's all, it's increased for the price of fuel. Operating casualty insurance, that's all same, transfer billing fund, that's the same. All of these things are pretty much things he's calculated based on.
Yeah, so his his budget went up three thousand dollars, throw four thousand dollars.
Yeah, two percent.
Yeah, okay. It's pretty, I'm pretty comfortable with that.
Uh, the ballot articles, we can the only thing I'm gonna say is you're gonna get an email from the rescue squad.
We got it.
We got it today.
Okay, uh, they were in this morning and we went over there. I'm assuming she explained the situation. For the Yeah, for the work comp.
Um, could you just go off the top of your head what we pay?
Um, so, so the situation is in the past, we have been giving the payroll numbers as if it was a volunteer organization.
Yeah.
And we were advised last year, um, passive, um determined that like the fire departments and the ambulances should all have their own coverage. For whatever reason, the rescue squad was kept on our policy. So when I renewed it this year, they recommended they have their own policy. Um, because passive doesn't carry their liability. I guess that was the loophole. Um, regardless, um, they're no longer mostly volunteer, so their payroll is very significant. So if it would be around twenty-seven to thirty thousand dollars that we would pay if it was kept on our policy. So there's two issues you have to keep in mind. One, they should have their own policy, which they're moving forward with. It's great. Um, the other one is the cost. So that's the purpose of the email and for the ballot article.
Well, that's a tough one because if they're not gonna be volunteer, they're turning into a business.
Well, there's a, there's a couple of things as far as I'm concerned. I don't want to get into them tonight because I don't think that's
No, we're on budget.
Right, and we're on budget. And I mean, and then without having a representative from the rescue squad here.
Right.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna open up that can of worms.
So
So I do have a couple of concerns, major concerns, actually.
So I just want to know what we were paying, thirty thousand roughly.
If we were to move forward, what we've been paying is around a grand.
Yeah, so it's a significant increase.
Yes.
So we go from a grand to thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So that grant is in this budget.
Okay.
I've been working with them and not wanting to cut off that coverage until they're secure. Um, so we're aiming for January first. Savings in the long run for us, but it's here just in case something
I'm surprised you're not even a certain number of hours volunteer so they can keep that status.
They got
No, that's okay. I'm just talking a lot with that though.
All right, so that brings us down to uh, expenses. A lot of these are literally things that just are cost of doing business essentially. The health insurance, um, that's the one I brought into one line last. So I have one here as a case. Megan currently doesn't have coverage and is sort of thinking she wants to go on next year. So that's the cover. And then the dental is twenty-five hundred and the vision is five hundred. It's done what we
Again, the short-term dental and vision are all new, but health insurance was already there, right?
Correct. It was just, it was underneath each person. Like postage. You can get a true sense of costing unless you
Added it all up.
Budgeted for it, right?
Yes, yes, yes. So they're not up above. They're not, so it's not a double.
It's the same, it's the same money, Bob, it's just in a different place.
Right.
Yeah, so I that was my, that was where I was going with the question is where's the
So if we go, if you go up to, uh, let's see who it like, uh, the town clerk or
Oh, okay, underneath each each row.
Right.
Okay.
And you'll see it's zero now.
Okay, I guess.
Other line items fifty, that would jump it to eighty.
All right, the generator expense, that's the that we helped pay at the elementary school, maintenance.
So that
We pay fifty percent, I believe.
That's maintenance at the at that school.
Yeah.
Do we still have that agreement in place? Does that, does that have to be signed every year?
Good question.
Because now the school doesn't belong to the town anymore. The school belongs to the SVSU. So that's something that should be
Yep, that should be addressed for sure.
If we're paying, if we're paying, and and I think it's a great thing. I mean, don't get me wrong. I mean, I was involved when that whole thing was was started and established. But if we're paying for the generator expense, I think we need to make sure that we have that building.
Still getting the
We're still getting that building as our emergency shelter.
That's right.
So, uh, you know, I don't, I don't, do you remember, you were on the board when I switched over? Do you remember that? Probably don't remember.
I don't remember that.
I didn't think so.
No.
So I just think we should double check and make sure that that's still
and
an agreement. And I mean, that agreement should really kind of technically be set and stalled.
Was there one to begin with?
I believe there was, Tim. Initially, years ago, there was when that generator was put in. Um, but but the agreement was between the Pownell School Board and the town of Pownell. Once the, once that changed hands a couple of years ago or whatever it was and went to the SVSU, I think if I remember correctly, I think there was an agreement still maintained.
I was on the new board as a one and I don't ever remember them discussing that or seeing that.
So, but
We really need to check into that.
Make sure.
Yes.
You know.
Because I sat on the board for one year, one state combined.
Right.
And then I got off and that was
Joined us.
Yes.
Lucky you. You're so lucky to be not out of that other shit. Yeah, slow leak.
Just wondering.
The safety inspection, um, I left that as is. Um, the county tax, I raised a little bit. I believe they said it was gonna go up three percent. But there was some fluctuation at effect.
Huh.
Um or what rate was, so that we actually probably could get away with leaving at the twenty-three. Twenty-one eight. Which is twenty-three and it was twenty-one eight.
Hmm.
That leads me to believe that it's gonna be twenty-three thousand this year. So I'll change that back to twenty-three. All right, the Glee Brent, left that as is. Oak Hill Cemetery Porlot, left that as is. The local agreement, which uh is also revenue line, so it literally um, zeros itself out. It's what we're currently receiving for that. So it's eighty-five hundred instead of ninety-five hundred. Um, the Bennington County Regional Commission, we just got that. So that's the amount that we can expect. Same for Vermont League. Payroll, that's based on the payroll. Same with munis. VCL employment insurance, work comp, same thing. Um, that's the line with includes the thousand for the uh, short-term interest, left that as is. These are the, all the rates for the bond. So the, for that's the super bond and then the next one is for the new town hall. And then the website, I decreased by three thousand. So this covers hosting and the weebly and and the contingency, I left the same.
And a lot of that stuff right there is consumer coming in.
The the sewer bonds zeroes itself out.
Right.
That's on the revenue side.
Right.
The municipal bonds um does not because it's not a separate thing on the property tax. So this is how it's generated to the property tax.
That's where I was going was a lot of that stuff we can't really mess with.
Correct, that's correct.
So we upped it ten thousand for the sheriff, but we're taking out approximately twelve hundred dollars, a thousand on county tax and then a couple of cell phones, five hundred out of those lines, correct?
Yep. I could do the cell phones pretty quickly here and I can give you
So we're probably up like twelve percent, thirteen percent.
Um, it's be higher than that.
The unfortunate thing is there's some unknowns in this budget increases because of the new town office and and a lot of those, there's a bunch of expenses that are doubled, so to speak. Um, janitorial and different things. I mean, I know it's not a lot of money each time, but each time you double because you have two buildings.
Yeah.
I think quicker we divest ourselves from this building, it's better.
Right, but unfortunately, this budget here is gonna reflect that
Yep.
double
Right.
dipping, so to speak. And there's no way around that at this time. I, in my opinion, you know, I think at the end of the year.
Right.
We have to budget for it.
Well, but
A B.
Yeah, right, we have to this year, but I
Yeah.
What I'm saying, I think, Bob, at the end of this fiscal year, this budget's fiscal year um, at the end. Given if we do, if we do our due diligence, there should be some quite a bit of undesigned needed funds.
For the following year.
For the follow all over.
Yeah, that's right.
That's just my opinion. I mean, I, you know, I don't know because there's a lot of double, am I saying that right, Tim? Am you like
You're correct. The other thing though to keep in mind is that also there's nothing being, there's none of the previous surplus being carried forward to this budget.
Right.
So you're gonna feel that jump regardless. So you're gonna feel that jump regardless, um, and that's a discussion for. Valid articles, right, to cover the municipal office building, but that's a big chunk, like if we added two hundred thousand in here. Four, four percent increase.
Right, did you catch twenty-two?
Yes.
You never know what the upcoming year's gonna bring, so you don't take it in plan appropriately then. Behind the eight ball.
No, that's for sure.
And that, and that's what's driving the, the biggest increase here, is that we didn't, we didn't use the undesigned funds to bring, to carry over to the following year.
Yeah, correct, there's nothing in there for that.
That's generally what we do and that helps.
So that's, it's a ninety percent increase. Now, the only caveat to that is, that's based on last year's grand list, so. I don't know what usually happens in that. But I think it generally goes up a tish.
A tish and a tash. Well, Tim, I think you did it well, very well.
So, just for. To satisfy my. Curiosity, if we applied the two hundred thousand dollar undesigned funds to this budget, what would our increase be?
Just said, what, the four percent you said?
Oh, he was guessing at it.
Yeah, so here's, yeah, let me get up there and I'll do it right now.
He gave us the accurate.
Yeah.
One, I want him to put, compare apples to apples.
Okay.
That's all, and it's not that hard as it, Tim, is it fairly?
No, I just have a pocket number, I don't have a mouse, I'm. Jumping around.
Six fifty-eight versus six one six, right?
Alright. And last year. Last year you guys brought over seventy-six thousand, forty-nine sixty-eight.
Yep.
This year there's, um, two seventeen forty-three sixty-three, so if I was to apply that whole amount. Goes down to four percent.
Yeah.
Now, what we, an option, um, when we talk about ballot articles, if we use two hundred of that. For the municipal office fund, and we could apply seventeen thousand. Um, I don't know what that, let's see what that does. Um, the reason, and I say that is because, so this, we're being audited right now, that audit is, is occurring as we speak. Um, you know, we're pretty confident in that number, but just in case, once they get done. So my recommendation was to use two hundred thousand, just in case it changed, it shouldn't change a lot. Um, so that we wouldn't mess up the ballot article. So seventeen.
Right, so, so the ballot article. That we're talking about is, is the ballot article to take two hundred thousand dollars of undesigned funds and apply it to the town office.
Right, so there's this sheet in your packet.
Yep.
Just so that everybody knows.
Yes, it's shall the town deposit two hundred thousand from the general fund, the municipal office fund for the construction.
So once again, that falls onto the. Tax bands.
Right, so. You could go about putting it in the whole thing here, and then in the municipal office fund, applying it down below. The difference is, that's for the fiscal year twenty-three budget, if you were to take that route, which means it doesn't happen till July first. When most of the funds for that will have been necessary. If you do a separate ballot article, um, not only is it very transparent to the voters what's happening, but you can use it immediately. Soon as the.
So do you want to go over the ballot articles now? Is that where we're at?
Are you done with the, you're done, right?
Budgets, yes.
Alright.
If we just do the seventeen thousand, it brings it down to twenty-seven percent.
For a crap of two percent.
Yes.
Which, which, the, the reality of it is, the, the undesigned funds, if we used it all, really only drops it. Twenty-five percent, because it's a four percent increase.
Right.
If you use that.
Correct.
Yep, so, so it drops to twenty-five percent.
But, Tim, let me just ask a question, so if this didn't pass, and we took the two hundred and seventeen thousand and put it in the budget. You said we could take that two hundred thousand dollars and move it down to where?
The municipal office fund, so what you do is you'd, it would not change this budget per se, it's a different way to do it. It would still be higher, tw- the twenty-nine percent would not change, because what you do is you'd put it undesigned, just like we did.
Right.
Right.
And you'd say you're spending it down below on the expenses to the municipal office.
We would make a motion to move it from the undesigned fund to the municipal office fund, what, per the, uh, taxpayers.
Right, the more, what I, what I, and I can, I can send you the emails I've had with VLCT. They seem, they want the ballot article, it's a much better way to go, and in our case, it allows us to use it in fiscal year twenty-two.
Right.
Which is to our benefit.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Alright, so you want me to read these?
Um, well, so here's the thing with those, I can, you know, quick.
Okay.
These are, what I have on this list, it's not all inclusive, so if there's anything you guys want to add, you can. These are coming from things we've mentioned in meetings, and things that have been brought up. Um, like the, the Lister's email, which I printed out for you.
Yes.
Um, that's on here. The elimination of the elected auditor, it's been, you know, vacant for a year. Uh, to you, if you want to choose to put it back on there, to remove it. The town hall surplus, the town report change, which would allow us to, um, just send a postcard. To all the registered voters, and then post it, the actual report on the website.
So how much would that save us?
So the, the last mailing of the town report cost twenty-seven hundred dollars plus postage, which was seven hundred something. Um, a postcard would be neg. Cause it's literally, you're just saying, you're selling it to people, go to the town website, it's, it's available. Um, and the postage would be, I, I don't know what a postcard would be, I think it's twenty-five cents or something.
So that was thirty-four hundred dollars, and it was, that included the mix-up, where we had to re submit.
Um, so that's, no, that was, the amount I gave you is the cost for the town report, because we didn't have to reprint the town report.
Okay.
Right.
Alright.
Just had to redo the addresses.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
I do too.
Personally, the town report change, I think.
I mean, that school's been doing that now for numerous years.
That's right, that's right, it's, you know, saves a lot of money at the end of the year.
Yes.
I agree with all these.
And then the last one is council.
And I think, I think, you know, to be, to be, um.
Oh, and then we'd have the kennel, we had one for the kennel.
The, the trans, the transparency here is, we have a letter from the Lister's office.
Yes.
Dated today, I believe.
Yes.
Yep.
Um, where there, the Lister's office from the town of Pownell.
Yes, okay.
That letter that we received today is asking to eliminate.
Their position.
Their positions, and they gave a, which I think we should probably. We should probably put that on our website.
I was just gonna say that, put it on our website.
Cause they gave a significant number of reasons to, um, eliminate that position.
Right.
It wasn't, it's absolutely nothing to do with the select board, it's coming directly from the Lister's office. And they gave a pretty detailed explanation and reasons why.
Yep.
And kudos to them for doing it.
Exactly, I mean, it's, it's, you know.
And to us, we didn't ask for it.
No.
So I, I think, you know, um. You know, I think, once again, you know, that's not us asking, it's them, them asking. And they're the ones that are doing the job, and they have a, a pretty significant number, and, and some great reasons why to get rid of it.
And we, and we learned from the VLCT, this is, this is happening in a lot of towns, and there are a real good reason for it, and they itemized this pretty well, so I'd recommend.
That's what I mean, that's, that, and that's why I think we should put it on our website. So that, because they did take some pretty serious amount of time to itemize, there, there's a lot of information on there.
A lot of expertise and consistency that you can expect if you, if you do change over.
Right.
And you, you don't have that reliability if it's elected, because they can change everything when they get elected.
They want to post that in the two stores too, that where we usually.
Right, yes, I think you should, because that way people can read it.
Ask questions and.
And they can look up these.
Right, I, I think on our website is definitely where it should go, and then, I think that's a great idea, we can have Megan post that in the, in the stores.
Two stores, yep, and on the window here, absolutely.
And remember when we budgeted, we budgeted for that scenario as well.
Right, we're covered either way.
Our budget's fine, right.
Yep.
Either or, so.
Okay, sounds good. So, we just have to wait to hear back from Leonard on the kennel, because that definitely should be put on the ballot. Um, what's our timeframe, that we have to have that information by so we can get it?
Um, early January, so I'll, I'll.
Can you reach out to him, please? I mean, I do see him every day.
And I spoke to him yesterday about it. The other thing I wanted to bring your attention is. Um. As it relates to ballot articles, is the woodlot, so you know, we did timber cutting this.
Right.
Last, and that earned us thirty-eight thousand, which you're free to use as you choose. There is, um, monies around twenty-two, twenty-three thousand from the last time. That, um, the timber was cut from the town woodlot.
And what, and we got what, like thirty-eight this time?
Yeah.
Being changed.
When that cut was done, there was, the fund was established for it, and it was, um, segregated, that the interest off that money. Be used to lower taxes, which is what's happened for the last, it's years, thirty-something years, but you can't use the money.
Right.
And the interest is like pennies.
Is right now.
So, the only, only bring your attention is if you should ever want to use that money for anything, you would have to put a ballot article out.
To request it.
To, yes, to change that.
So we had twenty-two and thirty-eight, that's sixty thousand dollars.
So my, my, here's, here's my line of thinking on that, guys, and I, and, whatever.
Sorry.
But, yeah, stop clicking, you know, you're the clicker.
No.
Oh, yeah, Bob and I don't even have ours in our hand. So, um, my, my line of thinking. Would be to get a ballot article started. To be able to use this sixty thousand dollars, because like you said, the interest is nothing. To reduce taxes, I, we're, we're not reducing taxes at, at all with the interest.
Kind of replace a portion of the undesigned funds.
But if we, but if we take the sixty thousand dollars and we had access to the sixty thousand dollars, potentially. Maybe it would buy us access to the woodlots.
Yeah.
So that we could use them for recreation. Or.
Right.
We could use the sixty thousand for undesigned funds to lower the tax rate, but right now, we can't do anything with that sixty thousand dollars.
You, you can't do anything with the original twenty-two, so what happened this year, you could, because it's a separate.
So you're saying that we can only ask to use the thirty-eight thousand?
Right now you have the discretion to use that.
We can, we don't have to ask to use the thirty-eight thousand, then, we could do that. I'm just, I'm just thinking about, you know, we, so, about trying to acquire access to those woodlots, and if we had to pay somebody for a right-of-way. There's, there's money that's potentially available to, without dipping into the coffer anymore.
Right.
It's, it's, there it is, we have it, we, you know, and that would be, in my mind, a pretty good use for that money.
But that was the whole thought process, I know, three years ago when we were talking about doing the timber, was to utilize the sale money to take in for access.
Well, you gotta, but if you have twenty-two thousand and you can't use, you know, look, if you have sixty grand versus thirty-eight thousand.
Definitely.
You're way, you know, you're better, you know, whatever.
At that point, I didn't know about that.
I, I think we should, I think we should put a ballot article on there, asking to be able to use that twenty-two or whatever it is, thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And let the voters decide what they want to do, if they want to keep reducing their tax rate by point zero 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 and one cent, that's fine, or use the money.
Right.
Give access to the select board to use the money at our discretion, and, and my first line of thinking is, is trying to gain access to the property, but.
How much, how, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I got a little confused.
So there's, there's twenty-two thousand from the last time that we cut.
Okay.
We can't touch that, correct, Tim? This time, we've saved thirty-eight thousand, and we can use that. Do we have to have permission from the taxpayers to use it, or is that at our discretion?
That's our, the thirty-eight, I believe, is at our discretion.
So I'm a little confused, what's the ballot that you want to ask?
I want to, I want to have a ballot article releasing that twenty-two thousand or whatever the number is.
Oh, once they release it, we can use it, right?
I want, I'm twenty-two, because what it would do is overwrite the stipulation that.
Okay, I misunderstood for a second, I thought we could like never use that twenty-two, I thought I had to sit there.
No, no, we'd have to come up.
I see what you're saying now.
We'd have to come up with the correct language, but, but I would like to add it. I'd like to see that twenty-two thousand dollars or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Be able to, be added to the thirty-eight that we have now.
For access, hopefully, in the future.
I, I'd like to, I guess the ballot article I would read to, um, reverse the stipulation that. That twenty, the inch, or whatever, we'd have to come up with the correct verbiage, but.
It's hard to be confused here, but what do we mean by gain access? I mean, is it gonna take that much money to gain access?
I don't think so, Bob, but, but we don't.
We can't use it right now.
Right now, we don't have access.
We don't have it.
We need a right-of-way, we're gonna need to put a road in, or a path of whatever we choose, and then make an, a. Parking area for people to start using the property and go hiking.
Oh, we're talking about just access to the property, not access to, to get, to get more revenue from, uh, from woodlands.
No.
No, no, no. Oh, alright, alright.
I'm, I'm trying to get access to the property so that.
Right.
People can use it.
But we need access to the twenty-two thousand that we can't touch right now.
We don't need it, and, but it would be nice to.
If we could.
Sure would make things a little easier.
Right.
Which are, uh.
I would think.
Do you under?
Do we have, I, I do, uh, do we have the, do we have the option of using some of this, of, of, of a ballot article that, that gives some of this back to the taxpayers? And some of it, and reserves some of it for, for access?
Once, I think, Bob, once we, once we gain, once the select board gains access to that twenty-two thousand dollars, we could give it all back to the taxpayers.
We don't have access.
Right now, we don't have access to the twenty-two thousand.
I'm sorry, what are we doing with the thirty-eight thousand?
Whatever we want.
Nothing yet.
Nothing, we could do whatever we wanted with that too.
So, so what I'm.
We could give all that back.
What I'm suggesting, and that's what I'm suggesting.
Oh, I know, I know where you're going.
Thirty-eight thousand back to the taxpayers and put a ballot article, thirty, twenty-two thousand to, to gain access. Is that, is that reasonable?
No, that's, uh. It's all reasonable, I mean, you know, but, but I, on the, you know, right now, right now, what I'm, what I'm thinking is. What the hell is the select board thinking that they're gonna?
I.
Twenty-two thousand dollars and they're gonna give the interest to reduce the tax rate?
Well, back in the day, because we're talking thirty years ago, and the interest rate.
Ronnie, was that you?
A long time ago.
Was that you? Did you think about that? Was that your idea?
Did you have to get some money on savings accounts back then?
Well, we, we're, we're about to be in that position again.
I was against cutting wood.
Oh, you're one of those tree huggers?
No, I don't feel that we'd rather be going in, cutting firewood and ruining good logs. That was my thought, mine and his father's, we were the only two that thought that way, but we stopped them from cutting it anyway.
So, so let me, I want to, I want to ask you a quick question, Tim, and this is along Bob's line of thinking right now. If we took off the current budget that we have right now, the way it's absolutely set up. If we took fifty-five thousand dollars. And applied it to that, our current budget, the, the budget that we're working on right now, what would that increase be? And applied it to that, our current budget, the, the budget that we're working on right now, what would that increase be then? Sorry, I hate to make you keep doing this.
55,000.
It would bring it down to 22% increase. So that's a seven.
That's, that's significant enough to.
Well, that's where, so, so what I, the way I, what I was doing there, Bob.
Put for what's needed right now.
Well, well, that's right. And so what I was, what I was, where I was going with that was the $38,000 that we just received from the logging. And the $17,000 extra from the 200,000, that's where I came up with 55,000. Just so everybody knows. That's, that's where I came up with those numbers. So if we took that $55,000. Undesignated funds is what it basically is.
Right.
And applied it to this budget. Right now.
It'd drop a 7%.
It would, yeah, that's, and that's significant, being at a significant increase also, and I don't like it at all.
Exactly.
And then we could still ask for the 22,000 so we could use that.
Right.
Yep.
And I think we should ask for the 22,000 or at least ask so that the select board or future select boards have access to that money.
So the quick synopsis is, we'll ask the select, we'll ask the voters to approve 22,000 to gain access to the property. We'll take the 38,000, add the 17,000 that was also a.
Undesignated.
Designated and give that back to the taxpayers.
Yep, and that would save, well, it'd reduce that 7%.
Yep.
I'm okay with that.
So, and, and just so we're clear, because we're on camera.
Absolutely.
Reduce the increase by 7%.
Right, that's right, that's right.
There is an increase and we're trying to limit it.
I just, I just, and I, and I, I'm comfortable with that. I, I think we should, we need that ballot article so that, so that we can gain. And, and I don't, Bob, I'm not even, I'm not opposed to earmarking that. 22,000, whatever it is.
Right.
Towards gaining access to that, to our, to our property down there, the town owned property.
I think that's a good idea.
7% off the 29, we're down to 22% increase.
Right.
Okay. And that's with putting the 17,000 and.
Do we need a motion to do all that?
Let me do this. I will redo the numbers so you actually see it and then we can bring it up at the next board meeting whenever.
That we just have.
Our next board meeting is Wednesday, correct? Not Thursday?
You guys hadn't decided yet.
Oh, okay.
There gonna be a conflict, Megan, if we have the board meeting next Wednesday?
No, there are no other meetings scheduled.
Okay. What's everybody, well?
Well, I already have plans Thursday because I thought we moved it to Wednesday, but.
Wednesday is better for me.
Wednesday is definitely better. How about you, Mike?
Oh, I, I'm golden any night.
Oh, my goodness.
Next week, anyway.
Next week.
No, there's no deer hunting until after that.
Oh, my goodness.
The holiday season in New York, so I'm good.
Okay.
And that's the regular select meeting.
Yes.
Regular 7 o'clock.
So what day is that? That's Wednesday, what?
22nd.
Yep.
As such, correct?
I have to go drop my tickets off early.
Okay.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Okay, excellent.
I'll be there.
Alright.
Unless I'm zooming in.
Okay.
George Jetson. Could be George Jetson, but I'll be there.
Okay, are we all set to open up for? Public comment? Yes, everybody ready?
I'm good, so.
Okay, Megan, please open for public comment. Remember to state your full name. And raise your hand.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Questioning answer. Slap you.
There's no one raising their hand.
Oh, come on.
Oh, my goodness.
They're all steamblown.
I move that we. Move into executive session for person, for a personnel matter. Which is allowed under the state statute and we will be taking action after the executive session.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be right back.
Do, 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 do.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back into regular session.
I move to accept with extreme regret.
Should we mention it first? Oh, I, I guess.
That's right.
Yeah, I guess that's.
Tim's resignation due to some personal reasons. Of his position. As the executive assistant. To the town and panel effective January 7th.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Tim.
Opposed, nobody, but we really don't want you to go.
I just want to say, Tim, you, this town is in substantially better shape for, for the time that you spent here. Thank you. Got a new website, we've got a much, a, a better office atmosphere, just a whole slew of things that are just, just incredible.
I will.
Finance forward tremendously.
I will also say that. There's no way. There's no way that the town hall. Would be where it's at right now without you, Tim. And I, and I mean that wholeheartedly. There is absolutely, we wouldn't be where we're at. There's no doubt about that. And I, you know that I feel strongly about that. I've said it numerous times, so. You know, plus the differences that you've made here, but there's no way we would have that building where we're at. Impossible. We've had great people working there for sure, but your guidance and diligence and stuff has been incredible.
So, that being said, can I go ahead and make the motion? I'll make a, I'll make a motion that, that. And Rebecca are, move forward with the posting of and. Posting of and vetting of candidates for a town administrator position.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
I move that we approve the job description. That's going to be posted for a town administrator position.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
With amendments.
With, with amendments that were discussed, correct?
Correct, thank you. All those in favor? Aye. The same, or.
Oppose.
Opposed? None, okay.
I move that we adjourn.
Second it.
All those in favor? Aye.